So we have one from French Thompson in person. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. You know, my knowledge of the consent agenda is so we can just pass a whole bunch of things at one time and don't really talk about them. And in number 15, in another line, it says, "Consider pilot to temporary close to turn some Old Town streets into a walk-only zone for one weekend per month." I don't know how many creative ways the city can try to figure out how to help put the businesses out of business. This has been brought up time and time again, and the businesses say this is not good for business. So it's a betrayal for all the businesses and all the time that have come up in front of you and previous city councils to say, "This is not a good idea. Other cities have tried it and have failed. Just go look at 15th Street Mall. Unless you just want Starbucks on every corner and a bunch of businesses to go out of business, this is just not a good idea." And it's starting to look like revenge for us business people coming to the city council and say, "These things aren't good." How this gets into the city council's consent agenda just boggles my mind because you could just blip and say, "Hey, we're going to shut down the streets in Old Town for a weekend a month. You know, I can't afford to have a weekend taken away from me. There's only four of them in a month." So I just ask you, seriously, think about what happens to other cities when you close down streets. I don't want to see that happen in Scottsdale. Thank you.
Counselwoman Littlefield, and then Vice Mayor Janik.
Thank you. I would like to pull item 15 off consent, please.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Janik.
I would agree with Counselwoman Littlefield. I think that we need to do a better job reviewing what we had agreed to. But I also think we need to make sure that we give the community time to make comments on this before we begin to consider it. And just a comment from me is that I am inexperienced as a councilperson, and some of the other people up here are as well. And we don't know all the history of what has been tried and what has failed. So don't think that we are trying to work against anything in Old Town Scottsdale. We want Old Town Scottsdale to thrive, and we are happy to listen to you to get more advice on it, on things that have been tried. But it's not out of a sense of being malicious or trying to beat anybody down. It's more inexperience on our part than a deliberate attempt to hurt anybody. So I kind of wanted to share that with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we still have these partitions between us, and I just want to be clear with Counselwoman Whitehead. Regarding number four, did you want that pulled also?
No, I don't. I just wanted to thank the citizens and staff. Thank you.
Good. Then, you know, at this point, I would be open to a motion on the consent agenda items excluding item number 15. And of course, 18 is not on, has already been pulled.
Mayor.
Counselwoman Littlefield.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve consent items 1 through 18B with the exception of item 15.
And just to clarify, 1 through 18A?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Because?
18B was withdrawn.
Good. And I saw a second?
I second that.
We have motion and second. Please register your vote. Thank you. Next, we will move on to regular agenda items 19 through 21. However, we are going to be discussing fully agenda item number 15. If we can have a presentation on item 15, which was the strategic plan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Brent Stockwell. I'm one of the assistant city managers here. And so this item here is a follow-up item from your work-study session on June 1st, where you reviewed a much longer list of potential priorities and identified a number of them. We fleshed them out in more detail, provided them here. There are nine here. These were the nine that you had either given three or more dots at the June 1st meeting. So this is your priorities and your strategic plan. So if there's any adjustments we need to make to it, we're happy to make those adjustments. And I'm also able to answer any questions you might have about this. Thank you.
Counselwoman Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, since I pulled it, I guess I'd better say something as to why I pulled it. I was reading through all of the different things that the council had suggested that we look at through an organizational strategic plan. And when I came to this one, it just blew me away. It says, "Consider a pilot to temporarily turn some Old Town streets into walk-only zones for one weekend per month." In other words, no cars allowed. People can't travel there. That closes Old Town. This is such a controversial break from our neighborhood. It's such a controversial outreach as to how we're going to destroy Old Town. I don't know. Is this something that we're getting even because we did the Transportation Master Plan? It makes no sense whatsoever to stop traffic from coming to Old Town on a weekend, which is when they do most of their business, on weekends. I can't go with this, and we need to have a lot more discussion on this item. I think it's very controversial. I have had a number of people call me and talk to me for quite literally hours on end about this, and they're outraged. I'm surprised there's only one person here tonight. Thank you, French. But I can't imagine anything we could do in the Old Town area that would outrage more of our business owners down there throughout the entire downtown Old Town than doing something like this. It's absolutely ridiculous. And there's no way I can support this plan as long as that's in it. So thank you.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Durham and then Councilmember Millhaven, followed by Counselwoman Whitehead. Counselmember Durham.
Well, I think I was the one who added this item about closing down streets. Temporarily is the key word, because I've seen it done in many places. San Francisco, New York, very, very common in European cities to have pedestrian walking areas that brings in loads of tourists for street fairs, for dining in the streets. No one's talking about closing down Old Town. And there are many people in Old Town who do support this. I've talked to some who think it would be a great idea to have street fairs, food truck fairs, dining fairs, that would bring people into Old Town. So we're not talking about closing down Old Town to traffic. I would never want to do that. But this could be used for different types of events that would bring a lot of people into downtown Scottsdale. That's the idea, is to bring more people into downtown Scottsdale. And I would like to keep it on this list because no one is saying we're going to do it tomorrow, or this weekend, or whatever. It wouldn't be done without a lot of cooperation from people in the Old Town. And if it's ultimately determined that it wouldn't work, or it was too unpopular, well, we wouldn't do it. So I see no reason to take it away from this list. I do agree, I might defer further consideration of the list, just because so more people will have time to look at it, more input from citizens. So I wouldn't mind deferring all of the list, but I would not want to remove that item on the potentiality of street fairs or some types of similar events. Thank you.
Counselmember Millhaven, and then Counselwoman Whitehead.
Thank you. And I just want to underscore what Councilmember Durham said. It says, "Consider a pilot." So we are a long way away from closing any streets. And in fact, I was approached by some downtown property owners who said they'd like to explore the potential of testing closing their street. And my reaction was, "Oh, my gosh. What are your neighbors going to have to say about that?" And his response was, "I've talked to a lot of my neighbors. I think they're enthusiastic about it. We know it's a heavy lift, because we know everybody on the street's going to have to agree and see the value in it. But I certainly think it's worth allowing him to pursue with his neighbors to see if this is something that can..." As Counselwoman Durham said, a street fair, or something, patios, or something that would make the streets more attractive and bring more people, frankly, downtown. But we are a long way away from closing streets without business owners and property owners being in support of it. But I think it's certainly worth having the conversation and allowing folks to pursue it. So thank you.
Counselwoman Whitehead, and then Counselwoman Caputo.
Yeah, I think we might want to consider some language that better clarifies what we have in mind. Maybe it's just the language. First of all, "consider" is the first word, and so that should right then and there make everybody at ease. But secondly, perhaps the way it was worded wasn't thoughtfully enough in that we're not closing Old Town. We're not closing Old Town for an entire weekend. And so perhaps what we want to do is change the wording to indicate that we are considering designated some streets or alleys for a couple hours, you know, as a pilot program. But it's, you know, with input from the citizens. This is, again, not something that we've made a decision in. And it was definitely in response to positive input that I received from business owners that discussed having alleys behind their properties converted to pedestrian boulevards. It was in response to businesses on Craftsman Court, who indicated a small part of Craftsman Court might be a good place for some kind of event during, like, an afternoon on the weekends. And it was in response to experience Scottsdale. They received feedback when they asked returning visitors, "What do you think Scottsdale needs more of?" One of the, I guess, one of the common responses they get is increased walkability, increased things to do while you're on the street. And so that's the basis of my interest in looking into this. And certainly, we're not closing down the art gallery. And so maybe we just need to, or the art gallery, Main Street, just better clarify what we're looking to do, a very limited closure that may include an alley or a street. And also, this is, you know, this is something we're exploring. You can't always win when you go out and you explore new ideas, but you should always try, because we can always get better. So thanks.
Counselwoman Caputo, and then Vice Mayor Janik, and then myself.
Yeah, just agree with most of the comments my colleagues have made. I was a little shocked, actually, that the comment was made that this was controversial. I didn't realize this would be controversial. Most of the businesses that I've heard from downtown, and we've spoken with quite a few, suggested that it would be desirable to have more customers walking by than to have more cars driving to our downtown. I mean, what business owner wouldn't want more walk-by traffic? I would think that that would increase the business for all of our downtown business owners. And we're certainly not taking revenge on our downtown businesses. Our goal is to increase business and walkability downtown. I'm pretty sure that's what we're all looking to do. And if you look at all of our goals, it's sustainability, it's walkability, it's a more vibrant downtown. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to create policies and bring ideas that will increase sustainability, advance transportation, provide more meaningful space, enhance our neighborhoods. I mean, these are these type of ideas with maybe bringing more walkability into our downtown. So that's our goal. We're exploring options to increase the vitality of our downtown businesses. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Janik.
I too received some complaints about the way this is stated, and I understand why people would say, "Whoa, what are you trying to do?" And what I would suggest is that we would say, "Consider a pilot to turn Old Town streets into more walkable zones to encourage more foot traffic and business with focused activities in certain areas of downtown." So I think it can be expanded. I think it should be better worded, too, so that you get the idea. We want this to be a positive experience, and there is no way we want to impede any type of business in downtown. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think as we look at this, there was an exercise by our council, and there were other five-star and even six-star items that were listed in the strategic plan. The plan is reviewed about every two years. So there are different, if you look at the content, there are many that will never be addressed in the near future. I say that because there are scores of these ideas. I do want to reference, again, I've been there 40 years, and at one point, they had something called Thieves Market. Thieves Market is when they set up tents and ate up parking spaces. And they turned that area into a kind of a drive, you could still drive your car through there, but what that did is it replaced the vendor, or the store, with a vendor outside. So there were vendors selling jewelry in tents and other goods in tents and so forth, competing with the businesses that are there year-round. And that eventually did shut down. So it was a direct competition with a permanent business. The, in my opinion, it would be better just to, in my opinion, just say, "This is the lowest priority," because one can look into it, this is only considering it. I don't think it rises to the top. I would actually move to delete that item. I don't, I think there's other ways to think this through and even look at, you know, it costs money to close off streets. You have to have police, you have to have detour signs, you have to have alternate parking to make something work. So it's much more than just saying, "We're going to put some cones at the end of the road and block it off, and somehow you'll find a parking space when those two or three blocks of parking are eliminated." Counselwoman Whitehead?
Well, I guess that's an option. I thought, I was actually very impressed with what Vice Mayor Janik suggested.
Okay. So if you want to repeat that and make it a motion, I think that we could do that. We could consider it.
I'd like to make a motion to change bullet under Value Scottsdale's Unique Lifestyle and Character, 1234. It's bullet number five. Consider a pilot to temporarily turn Old Town streets and encourage more traffic, more foot traffic, focused on enhanced businesses with specific entertainment activities.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Counselmember Durham, did you have a comment?
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. The Downtown 2.0 study, which I've been reading, said it's events which attract tourists, more so than storefronts. So I like Vice Mayor Janik's language. Maybe we could put something in there about sponsoring events, street events, because that's what I'm really getting at here, is, as I said, I've been to events in New York where you can't even walk because the street is so packed with people visiting these events and going into stores. So that's what I'm really talking about, is events. And if Vice Mayor Janik can work that in there, I'd be very happy with that also. Thank you.
Counselwoman Littlefield, and Janik.
Well, from what I've heard, this is an extremely controversial issue right now. And if we don't drop this, change it, do something, it's going to have ramifications that most of this council will not like. People are very, very upset about this. They have fought hard for their parking spaces. This has been one of the biggest things that we've talked about this year, is parking in downtown. And now we're going to close the street. That is not going over well for these people who thought they were going to be able to get some relief for the needs of the parking in front of their stores and their shops. And this isn't just the galleries, it's a lot of them. And I can't support this. This has, this needs a lot of neighborhood outreach, which we have not given it. This needs a lot of discussion groups and work-study groups, is what exactly do we plan on doing, and how are we going to do it? And how are we going to keep the businesses open while we do it and not allow cars on the streets? You know, I'm sorry, I know a lot of people don't like cars, but we are a car-driven society. It's who and what we are. And that's why we had all the parking problems that we've had down there, is people want to drive their cars into downtown, park them, and go walking at that point. And if we don't allow them to do that, they'll go somewhere else. There's nothing that makes them go to downtown. So I think that this is a move in the wrong direction. If we want to have events on the sidewalks and in the streets, that doesn't need to close down the streets every month. We can do that once in a while, and close it down on a Saturday or something, or on a Friday, and have a special event where everybody is there and everybody can do their thing. We don't need to close down a walkability street with nobody coming. And I think it's very, very bad. It's highly controversial. We've had, or I've had at least a number of calls and discussions on this from the neighbors, from the people that have businesses down there, and they are very upset. They do not want this. And they feel like it's a stab in the back from what they just thought they got with the parking ordinance. So I can't support this. We need a lot more neighborhood intervention here. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Janik, and then Counselwoman Caputo.
Okay. We probably could change what I said and just consider pilots to encourage more foot traffic and business activity with focused events, and then not even worry about how we're going to do it. Just, that's one of our goals. And it would be way more general. But I also have to say, I do think we need to give the community more time to review all of these issues, because obviously, it's through input from the community that we realize we need to tighten up on some of these things. And that would make it easier when we finally get to the point where we want to adopt them. Thank you.
Counselwoman Caputo, and then Counselwoman Whitehead.
I wasn't picturing this, a type of program as a mandate, per se, that we would just decide amongst ourselves, "We're putting it here." I was picturing, when I read that, that we would do some outreach into the neighborhoods and that the neighborhood, the business owners that wanted it, if that particular block of business owners was in agreement that they saw the benefit of this, then we would agree to do a pilot for them to help them increase walkability and viability and vitality for their particular section. We certainly weren't saying, "We, the council, were going to force a particular block of our city to be closed." Again, my impression of this idea was, it's just a great idea, it was going to be a pilot, and we would certainly do extensive outreach and make sure that it was only going to impact a section of our city where the business owners were actually excited to try it out and join in. I think that's where the idea originated from, anyway. They brought it to us and said, "Hey, we've got a whole bunch of business owners in a block that would love to see what this idea would work, would look like in operation. And so, why not? It's just a test." But again, we certainly weren't implying that we were going to mandate a business to accept this idea without having input from them. That was my impression.
Counselwoman Whitehead.
Brent, so I will say that I didn't even, parking was not on, was not in my head when we were thinking about this, because we were responding to the businesses in this specific area. So I agree, parking, we spent however many months adopting a new parking ordinance. Obviously, this council is extremely committed to that, and that is why I liked the first motion that Vice Mayor Janik made. Can you read it again? Because I don't think that implied any change, any impact on parking. Would you mind rereading that, Brent, or Vice Mayor, whoever has it handy? Vice Mayor Janik, can you reread your original motion?
I will try.
Thank you.
"Consider a pilot to temporarily turn some Old Town streets into more walkable areas to encourage more foot traffic and business activities, including focused activities." And I'm going to add, "or events."
Okay, thank you. I just want to address that. One of the people I am responding to is one of the most active pro-parking people in downtown. And she is the one who came to me with the idea of making, in this case, a big, a wide alley, which does have cars going through it, making that an event space. And she says they do similar things in Europe. So I'm actually responding to people who are very pro-parking. And while the initial, what we have here, I can definitely see, it would appear that we are taking away parking spaces. Vice Mayor Janik's motion does not in any way imply that we're taking away parking spaces, and absolutely, there's nothing this council does that doesn't involve the citizens. So I think, Counselwoman Littlefield, I think if you re-listen to that motion, I wonder if that's something you would consider supporting.
Okay. The main difference I hear in the motion from what was submitted, it says, "Once a month." And Ms. Janik took that out. She just said, "Try it as a pilot." And that will warrant discussion. And by taking that "once a month" out, it just becomes a pilot. So it could be tried, it would have to be tested, and it would have to be approved by the participants of that block. And it may also require some funding. So when you reread the motion, it did not say, "Once a month."
Correct.
And it just said, "Pilot." And I think that's inadequate enough description so that I could at least support that idea. Now, again, it's not a top of my priority in terms of, and I am very concerned about any blockage of other, or bringing other businesses that, you know, may be here, there at the event, and then gone, or from out of town, or whatever. And they would be in conflict with the businesses that we have here that struggle and work year-round to be successful. So we have a motion and a second. Any, please register your vote. Okay, moving on. Item number 19 is the District 9400 Shea Non-Major General Plan Amendment and Rezoning. This case has been requested to be continued to August 24th, 2021, City Council meeting. Are there any other questions regarding this before I accept a motion? City Attorney?
I'm so sorry, Mayor. I think we need some clarification on your prior item.
Oh, yes, we only made an amendment. We didn't actually vote on the fall one.
That's correct.
That's correct. So I move we accept item number 15, Strategic Plan, except for the amended item pertaining to consider pilot for temporary downtown street, as stated by Ms. Janik, and passed. So we would be passing all the other items as presented and including, sorry, just item number 15 in our regular agenda with that clarified amendment, as amended, yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Register your vote. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.